And it's three o'clock, so it's time for our session. The mayor is out of state at a family funeral, and so I'm giving the honor of sitting in for him. And we have, and I believe Mr. Shu is going to be here. So we have a large agenda, so let's get started. The first thing on our agenda is Exit 14 discussion with CDOT. Do we have people here or are they on board?
Uh, Member of town, Council, we have Jennifer Sparks from CDOT here to talk about where we're leaving things off with Exit 14 and answer any questions you guys have at this point. So we wanted to just kind of revisit that discussion and make sure we're coordinating with what we're doing with what CDOT's working on as well.
Great.
Hi, Jennifer. Hopefully you can hear us okay.
Yeah, I just turned my volume up on my end. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. Well, Jennifer Sparks, I'm the Region to CDOT South Program Engineer. I replaced Ajan Hu when she left in March. So if you knew Ajan, I've taken over that position. I got on the call with me Laurel Jones, she's the designer resident engineer, and Daniel Busfaro, he's going to be the project manager on the CDOT side. What we've been talking about with Steve and Hesgrup is that we've got, there's $5 million that's been identified in our tenure plan to do, to implement recommendations from a Trinidad traffic study. So there was a Trinidad traffic study done in, how do I find the date of that? Hopefully you guys, uh, June of 2022. It kind, it looked at, um, exits, I think it looked at exit 13, 14, quite a few different locations in Pudlow, or Pudlow, oh yeah, sorry. Exit 12, 13, 14, and 15, and did a complete street analysis. This money, the $5 million was set aside to something from that, that traffic study. And, and what Ajan asked down to us was that we wanted to do something at Exit 14. And so the, the idea at Exit 14, I think I, can I share my screen? Can you guys see if I share my screen?
Yeah, give us one second, Jennifer. I think we can make you the host temporarily, so you can do that. Okay, you should be the host now. And you might have to admit someone in the waiting room if you're zoom savvy.
My tether was in the waiting room, hopefully she got loaded in.
We're making you a city employee.
All right, I'm gonna share.
Great, yeah, we can see that.
Can you guys see this?
Yes.
So, um, the traffic study looked at a bunch of different options. For Exit 14, the option that's the least impactful to the right of way and the most believable with the amount of funding we have is this option two, which would be to build the off-ramp, uh, parallel with I-25 and kind of match in with the on-ramp. Then, depending on funds, hopefully we'd be able to do this right turn here. Wouldn't be enough money with the $5 million to build this cul-de-sac and redo this entire intersection. And it was our understanding that Trinidad was in the process of purchasing the right of way here for this work to be done. Is everybody aware of that? Is that something that's still going on?
Yes.
I'm trying to, I'm, it's a little distant from where I'm sitting, so it's hard to kind of glean this. But it looks like, are you having a southbound ramp, off-ramp that splits? That goes alongside I-25, that parallels to the on-ramp? And then there's another side of it that goes off to the right?
Yeah, this little piece right here, there'd just be like a little island maybe for pedestrians to cross so that they wouldn't have to cross, uh, right turning movement and the left turn.
And Ms. Sparks, that's what you're saying, the, the $5 million could cover those two aspects of that design?
Yeah, believing this, and, um, I think I only shared this PDF, so I'm gonna stop sharing and share Google Earth really quick, hopefully. All right, yeah, so right now, you know, we want to, we want to get rid of this five point here by bringing, by moving this off-ramp, southbound off-ramp, parallel with I-25 and tying in with the northbound on. I'm gonna drop into street view really quick. The way that would require some walls and a lot of earthwork kind of creating here to make it and to match in with what you see on this side.
And Jennifer, if I can ask just a couple of quick questions while you're showing us that. So we had talked a little bit at a staff level about land acquisition to make this happen. I think we're working on some property owner identification right now. The mayor had mentioned, and apologies, he's not here right now. He had mentioned that to make this successful, we would have to purchase the J&amp;J building and the service station that's there. Is that correct? Or would we just need enough right of way to make the, the off-ramp work for, for the project?
We haven't done any preliminary design right now.
Okay.
I do, I do think it would be really close here for these two structures. The price tag just goes up, the more walls, we have to move to stay away from them. Laurel, you might be a little more familiar with what amount of right of way we might need?
Oh, I think just based on preliminary looks, for the ramp, we would just probably use those two buildings and not the service station at the corner.
Okay. So would that contemplate removing those buildings?
Can you see this design here? Are there conceptual drawings now, or are you guys still seeing?
Yes.
Go door.
We can see the, your map, that version, that the green.
Yeah.
Okay. This was a really high level. It looks like this, this kind of pedestrian trail that would connect over San Pedro crosses over these buildings here. And I think it's widened green area, that's, well, instead of walls. We'd really have to start doing some modeling to see if we could avoid having from all of these buildings. I do think there really is no way that we could keep this access road open or usable. There would be no way for that, or, or even for this, uh, an alleyway that's here now.
I think that's a.
What do you, what do you think, Laurel?
I think that, um, concrete accessway is in our right-of-way now. At least preliminarily, what I've gotten from our right-of-way group, from old map, they haven't actually looked into it. So that would definitely have to be closed. The other northwest road, um, we could probably leave a portion of it open if we needed to, but we would have to make it into a dead end.
This here, I've got my hand kind of.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we would need to close the ramp here and, you know, probably in the road. You got all this, that's lighter color gray here? With our project, it wouldn't eliminate the, the five point if we kept, if you had to keep this access back here.
Okay, so Council, obviously still some design work that needs to go into play to help us with final decisions. But from what I'm hearing, purchase of the properties that are contemplated at Exit 14 would be dependent on the needs of the reconfiguration, as far as CDOT's concerned. Obviously, you all may have different beliefs.
Does Council want to weigh in on this, or have any questions or comments for CDOT?
I, I just had one question for you. What did that $5 million traffic study show in June 2022? And were more people exiting off 13, 14, or 15? And do you think the numbers have changed, maybe in 2023 in a year's time?
Not familiar enough with the study to be able to just flip through and find that kind of information. But, um, they did take together some different options at prices. And really with $5 million, the only, the only work, project that we could actually do would be smaller version of Exit 14 that I just showed you. Or, uh, exit 15, uh, northbound. There was a, uh, an improvement that could be made there, would fit into that $5 million budget. But otherwise, the rest of the study showed, um, pretty expensive options for the other exit.
You don't have.
We really do need Trinidad to purchase the right of way for any, any other thing to happen here at 14.
Sure.
So, Jennifer, my name is Karen Grego. And I feel this, this project, this Exit 14 improvement is imperative for the economic health of downtown Trinidad. Trinidad's invested a lot of money in the Riverwalk project, which is maybe two blocks from Exit 14. And there's the Laporta project, uh, that has, it's a tourist destination. It's going to continue. So my question to you is, I think, however we do it, I think it's imperative that we get it done. But my question is, so if the city invests in purchasing that property, will we be able to retain our rights as to what other property that is not used by CDOT? Such as some type of, um, maybe a water feature, or a statue, or something that makes it inviting for people to get off the interstate at that point?
Whatever would be outside of the CDOT right-of-way, if Trinidad buys it and you follow the Uniform Act, I think that was something our right-of-way folks were, were going to help you, you all with.
Yeah.
If you follow the Uniform Act when you buy it, then whatever remainder parcel you guys will be able to, um, get federal grants and, and do with what you would need at that location. That's my understanding.
Okay, so there's no requirements of the city, excuse me, other than purchasing, purchasing that property for CDOT to access? We could do with what we wanted after? You wouldn't require anything specific on that property?
We would, um, we would limit access to the, to the ramp, you know?
Right.
With our right-of-way, you know, we have access requirements. I, I don't think so. Laurel, Daniel, do you guys know of anything that we might, okay? Yeah, I think, I think the big key though is that Trinidad should follow the Uniform Act to purchase it and work with our right-of-way folks so that if you are looking for grants for, say, a multimodal center, or for a fountain, or, or something like that, that you guys would be able to apply for those grants because the right-of-way was purchased through the Uniform Act.
Another aspect, the reason why 14 South is so important is because when the original, um, changes to Exit 14 North, cut off a main artery from Pine Street to Commercial Street. And it seems like those properties in that area were, there's people that are ready to revitalize that area. But I think the improved Exit 14 South would help us. And I'm glad I finally found out what your last name is, because I just say Jennifer with CDOT, so now I have a, I have a last name to go with. Thank you, Jennifer.
There's a couple of us, so yeah, Jennifer Sparks.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I agree with Ms. Councilman Grego with the Exit 14, whereas it letting out to, obviously it's at Commercial, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it would definitely help the community for us have access to downtown Trinidad. Whether that be us purchasing the, the buildings or leveling them at this point. So I guess we'll have to have further discussion to see what the plan of action for Exit 14 is. It's never a question or a comment.
Councilman, Councilman Williamson, do you have anything you want to add?
Are you okay?
Yeah.
I apologize for being remote today. I couldn't help it. So my question is, for this already, so I'm, I'm sorry for, uh, again, um, for the improvement of the southbound Exit 14 to occur, we would need to demolish that building that's closest to the highway. Is that what I'm understanding?
Awesome. Potentially, yeah.
Sorry, was that Steve?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor. Yes, I, I think that's what's being said. Now, we won't know for sure until, um, CDOT completes their, their design and their survey work. But it sounds like that could be a potential, I think. So if you look at the, the street that goes kind of to the south of the J&amp;J building, that is an actual city street. So we, we can certainly relinquish some of that. But to Jennifer's point, it sounds like there need to be some pretty robust walls and separation, and we'd be right up against the building at a minimum. But it could come out that the design contemplates that that building has to be removed to accommodate the off-ramp as well.
Okay. So I know Google Earth engineering never turns out very well. I, I fully understand that. But I mean, from a, a layperson's perspective, it does look like it, it may be able to go in there without demolishing the building. So is, is that a potential option? Or I mean, we're 99% sure that's off the table, Jennifer?
We're, I, I'd say we're still looking at, I would not give it a 99%. But another issue would be access. I do think we're gonna need to use a part of that road, the concrete road that's there on the, um, west side, or east side of the, of the structures. I do think we would probably need to use part of that.
Sure, and I get that. It's just, uh, my, my concern thought process is, I mean, it's a, I was, I don't think it's a, um, has any historic actions right now. I do think it is a really nice building, and if it's possible to keep, I mean, I think it's something that would, that would be nice to do. But, um, no, that, that was my only question. And I did have, actually, I'm sorry, I did have one further question. To date, the $5 million is, is earmarked for some project in, in the Trinidad region? It's just what, we need to make that determination correct?
Well, it's earmarked as implement recommendations from the Trinidad traffic study. And I think, um, I'd have to double check on our website, how, how detailed we got on whether or not it was Exit 14. But, um, $5 million sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't really go very far, especially on an intersection.
No, I, yeah, I get, I get that. Okay, um, do you for your time?
One other quick thing is, you know, depending on how much money, you know, once we start running the model and we see, like I said, the walls are more expensive. But if, if had the budget to fit a, a wall in and preserve a building potentially, you know, that would be something we could look at. But, um, seems like every day the price of, uh, construction keeps going up. So we just want to make sure we get the project started and, and get moving forward of getting you guys what you want down there in Trinidad.
Thank you. Yeah, Jennifer, Member of town, Council, if you don't mind, just a couple, a couple other points, just so Council's aware. What is, I believe it's 2026 is the deadline for spending this, this funding? Is that correct, Jennifer?
The funding is identified as fiscal year '23 to '26.
Okay.
We definitely would love to have a project advertised at least. I wouldn't say it would be built by 2026.
Okay.
But we would love to, we need to show that we're looking towards spending it.
Okay, and just so Council is making a informed decision, it sounds like, you know, there, even with what we're talking about today, there's a couple of options. Could that money potentially be spent if we took the exit as it currently exists, but just wanted to spend some money to totally redo the whole Five Points area and make that a different level of access coming off the highway? Would that be eligible for this funding? Or does it have to go directly to, to, to off-ramps, on-ramps, that type of thing?
I think since the CDOT money, we'd need to focus on, uh, our facility more.
Okay, that's fair. Just wanted to ask that question.
Ms. Sparks, I, I remember when they did the traffic study that, um, we, we had a long presentations from them about all the various options and costing out as best as they could, all the different options. And I believe at the time, it was strongly their recommendation that we look at this option and, uh, the southbound Exit 14. And I think Council at that time and continues to this time thinks that's the right way to go. So, and I, I don't think any of us are opposed to, from what our prior conversations have been, to find whatever is necessary in order to make this happen. I'm wondering what the next step would be for us to keep this wall moving so that we can get it started as quickly as possible. What, what would that be?
Well, last we talked with Steve, Trinidad had been working on the survey of the area and getting the ownership together. And then working with our right-of-way folks was gonna be next to make sure that everything was getting followed appropriately. And then once we have confirmation that, that Trinidad's moving forward with purchasing these, these properties, I think we can, we can start getting our survey and start doing some modeling and, and kick off our project on our end.
And an update of that, so we did, it took a long time, but we finally got the survey a couple of weeks ago. So that's good. It took months. And then the next step in terms of acquiring the property, we are working with TJ, um, with CDOT's right-of-way division. We would, we would work towards an appraisal process now that the survey is done and see what the price would be on that. What do you need, I guess, Jennifer? I think Council is giving direction at least to move forward with design of reconfiguring the exit. Is there anything you need from us to begin that process?
I'll, I'll check in with TJ and just make sure, um, that we can without, without getting in the way of the right-of-way process. You know, we don't want anyone feeling like they're getting forced on the right-of-way side. So we wouldn't want to go too far. But I, I think we can, uh, get the survey, and I don't know how much survey you guys had. If you already did some survey, you know, sharing that with us, if you did a total of survey. Because that $5 million that I've been talking about, that also includes the design funds. So, um, we're gonna try to do as much of this in-house as we can. But it's, uh, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars in design at least to get us a fully designed set of plans and specs.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Williamson? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks, and we'd love to come down and introduce ourselves in person. And we'll be working with Steve to get, to come to another meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
We're talking, maybe once the new Council's seated early next year, we'll have CDOT come down in person and have a fuller conversation.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, number two, we have the Arts and Culture Commission, public art purchase. This should be pretty easy. We just wanted to give you an update on our latest project that we're doing and the fact that we did an, our request for proposal for this particular project and had two people, uh, you know, respond to it. And, uh, so we're pretty proud of that, actually. So anyway, this is going to be a whimsical seating thing. And, oh, if you pass that around, I don't know if Erin's gonna be able to see it or not. It's called kissing coons, and it's two different seats.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, it's gonna be made out of metal. And, um, I think it might be put at either Chaminot or Central Park. And the good thing about this particular piece is that it's not permanent. So I know you guys have plans to do stuff. So this could be put another place, it, you know, once your plans start formulated with that. But we just wanted to let you know what we were doing and, uh, you know, if you have any questions about it. No questions? Does anyone have any questions right now?
And we also have the money for it.
Yeah.
So there you go.
Can you explain the kissing coons?
Yeah, they're, they're facing, the two raccoons are facing, yeah, facing each other. Oh, and the other thing is that it is ADA. It's gonna have a place where they, that's what the wheelchair.
Tell them it's in this area that the people that are making it are Trinidadian.
Yes, and it's local artists, local artists. It's Amy Warblueski, let's see.
Believe it or me.
And, uh, you know, we're, we're pretty excited about this. We have some other designs that we need, want to use later, uh, but those are permanent. And we thought, well, you know, with all the influx of everything, it might be a good idea just to go ahead and put this in, and then we can move it if we have to, or we can move it or whatever. So I just thought you'd like to know, so.
I, I had one thought, as I, I've been thinking about this because I, I heard about it at the meeting that I attend, was that, one thing that I strongly had asked the Commission to do was to work closely with staff about its placement and any safety concerns that might be that come about because of it that I was thinking of. Amy works, she's a welder, and so this is gonna be a metal structure. So things that I was concerned about is, you know, sharp edges and no sharp edges and seating that's not gonna be so hot that you can sit on it in the sun.
Well, I don't know. I guess we have to figure out a way to put it someplace where it might be shady or where it may be. But as, we did ask her about the sharp edges because it is gonna be made out of steel. And she said she was going to round off all of the sharp edges so that it would not be, you know, a concern. The other part of it, I mean, the sun shines, so, you know, we'll just have to see if we can find someplace to put it. But I would, I would like to put this someplace where it's very visible so people can see it, so.
What happens with the dismantling, the storage ones?
Well, I don't think we're gonna have to store it. I think we, we might have to dismantle it, move it, you know, once you all fix, figure out what you're gonna do with Chaminot Park. Or, or it could probably go at Central Park, too. But, you know, I think those are two, two good places that we could figure out a way to put it.
Were you hoping to get more to, more RFP proposals?
Yes, we've had, we've had two that we've published, um, this ye, this year. One of them wasn't too, didn't work out too well. And we're also, um, putting together a list of artists. And we're gonna get an email address and, and so we can, so we can not only have it published by the city. so we can not only have it published by the city, but also have it published, you know, to the local artists in town so that everybody has a chance to, to look at it in case they don't have Facebook or whatever, you know. So, but anyway, yeah, we're pretty proud of the fact that we were able to get that done. I don't know if all of our projects will be that way, but this one worked out pretty good. So.
I wasn't sure if you were asking if they were not sure about this design because they, they've already, you've already approved this.
It's all approved and it's funded and everything.
Should be great.
Thank you so much for being on the board.
Okay, number three, South Central Council of Governments.
Amanda Beach, no one. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Wozniak. I'm the Inter Detective Director of the South Central Council of Governments. With me today is Veronica May, so is the Area Agency on Aging Director. And so there was a couple of things we'd like to kind of update on council, update council on and then have requests of support for. So the first one, right now we have a regional grant coordinator, which is grant-funded through the state of Colorado. And in that role is Donovan Titores. And as we're working through budget, we, we have a little extra money in that grant. So we approached the state and said, hey, can we use that money to hire a grant? So the state said, sure, but they, with that funding, they can only work on federal grants. So what we thought is, well, if we can use that funding and backfill it and hire a full-time grant writer, there would be, there would be a regional grant writer that would help everybody in the Biden County region, which would be welcome in the San Luis County. So we're approaching our member governments to see if we can get financial support to fill this position. So right now we have $45,000 that we could put towards this position. And so we need support that should that city could provide and we're approaching the other governments to see if they would be able to put any funding in. So kind of where we're at with that.
Can I, I see, can I ask you a question? Are you saying that that grant writer could only apply for federal grants?
So we could, with the money that the member governments put in, then we can go after any grants. But just specifically, we have to use it to, against federal grants for that $45,000 and a half. But if we can fill in with local money, then the local money will accrue.
State grants or other grants? Okay.
So the second thing is, the Area Agency on Aging provides about 2,500 meals a month to seniors in our Biden County region.
I'm sorry, is it 2,500?
2,500. So, yeah, roughly about 1,100 of those are served at the senior center. And then about 1,500 go to homebound. So we deliver meals to the door for the individuals that aren't capable of getting to the senior center. And those are all prepared in the senior center kitchen. So there's, so what we were looking at is since we already operate the majority of the services that are provided at the senior center, that we could just take over operations of the entire senior center. And make it, you know, so we could bring our AAA program in and provide all of those services and allow the seniors to have more exposure to those programs. Not only that, but currently how it's run is the seniors are charged a membership to use the senior center. And we believe that, that, you know, it's $20 a year, but people that are on fixed income, that makes it a little difficult sometimes. So we would like to eliminate that barrier and allow just every, like any seniors to use the senior center and not allow them, make them be members. And I know with that, I'm probably missing some stuff. So I'm gonna let Veronica kind of just take over and.
So I'll give you more, just more information on our Agency on Aging. So we provide, nutrition is our biggest program and, you know, that's obviously a big need. But we also provide assistance with transportation, in-home care, material aid assistance, you know, COVID and it's terrible weather and wonderful with the funding that it gave us. And now we're coming back to where we're at. So we're trying to balance, you know, the funding we get from the state and, you know, really get the information out. And, you know, there's been some turnover at this, at this center in that director position. And every time a new director comes in, we have to reestablish, you know, like let everybody know this is how it works. You know, the meal program is separate. There's this confusion of, I'm a member, you know, that's why I'm getting this $2 donation per meal. And that's not the case. The nutrition program is set by, you know, the state, you know, aging. That's what sets all of that. So it's this constant, just trying to reestablish with the new person, you know, in the couple, I mean, in the eight years that I've been doing this, there's been four different directors. One of them was a longtime director. She was there for a very, very long time. But since then, it's been, and every time we're just going back, going back. And, you know, anytime AAA wants to come to do something, we have to go in, ask permission instead of just truly providing these great services that, you know, we can do. And another big one has been security. You know, there's multiple people that are in and out of that building. And, you know, we've had to call the, you know, the city, we need help, you know, and just trying to establish our safety area. And, you know, just recently, one of the big things was we locked our kitchen down. Well, we ended up having a flood in there because of, you know, we just don't have that continuity of the entire building and securing it. So we feel that if we can take over the operations of that, we can allow, you know, seniors to be more activities involved and really have a say in what they want to do and how they want to run it. Those kind of things. And we're gonna be there to support all of that for them. You know, we're, we're very grateful to City of Trinidad and that building that they provided here. It's actually the role model for what we're gonna be doing in Warfarin County. We did receive funds from SB 290, which was specifically for AAAs. We are the smallest AAA in the state. 16 AAAs. We are the very smallest. We received less than half a million dollars in funding from programs in two counties. And I believe we do a great job. And all of our services are donation-based. And I will tell you, this region is one of the most generous givers in the state. And we know that all the time. So, you know, it's a $2 suggested donation for a meal to eat there, $2.50 for a home-delivered meal. Transportations, like a $1.50. So we definitely keep those, you know, down so that people can feel that they are contributing to our programs. But we just, you know, we're here today to say, you know, we want to make this seamless. We want to use Trinidad as a further guide that, you know, COG AAA is gonna come in, we're gonna own the center, you know, give those seniors the opportunities to do what they can. And then we're gonna do this in Walsonburg in Warfarin County. So in addition to what we do in Trinidad, we also serve up into the fender out of this kitchen. So.
One in New York.
No, I don't, because they're all separate. Different county.
And also we, it's not that we want to push this current senior board out. We would like them to stay on board with us and be like an advisory board where they're still kind of running the show, but we would handle all the operations sides and the disposals.
That $45,000, is that gonna be the grant writer's salary position here?
No, no. What we would like to do is if we don't acquire any more funding, we'll just do a part-time position. But if we can get some more funding, then we would definitely make it a full-time position.
How much are you asking for, Brian, from the city?
If, what, I guess it just depends on what you're able to give. But, you know, if we can go somewhere around 30, then we can, $30,000 and we can at least get that bumped up. And, you know, I guess the more money we have, we should be able to hire a better, a better writer.
I hate to admit this, but I'm a member of the senior center. But I thought that $20 was something that they did internally to buy birthday cakes for people and stuff like that. I don't think, it's not really a set fee, is it? Or is it?
Yeah.
It's the annual thing they require. And they just bumped it up.
Is that 20 or 30?
It was a dollar.
It was 15 and then it went to 20 just recently.
And I, I know my mother was part of the senior center before she passed. And you're absolutely right about, about the, about the leadership out there. They've had, they've had issues. If you wanted to get into a biting match, you go over there when the seniors are upset. You better go in with a hard hat. It's not good. So I think continuity. Would you keep the same director that's out there or would you provide your own?
No, we would provide that for the top. And the other thing too is, I think, I believe that the city would have more representation with us operating the senior center. Because as you know, Aaron Williamson is a member of our board. So he's gonna get updates that everyone of our board needs and what's happening there that he can bring back in the country.
And we would also, I mean, we, you know, come in front of you as well with an update as we need to. So the other thing that I brought is the state helps us put these together. It's basically just a vacu about the Area Agency on Aging. And, you know, what an important service it really is to the state and how it's funded. And, you know, we also will probably try to take advantage of this grant writer that COG will have because we know we're gonna need it going forward. So.
Are you guys, the grant writer that you have, is that the one you've been using or is this a new?
This, this would be a new position, but we currently don't have a grant writer.
Oh, you don't have one at all? Have you been using grants or?
Most of our budget is grant revenue. So we, each director right now is entirely writing their own grants, imagining their own grants. So this would just take a little bit off their plate and allow.
A special.
Right. But it'd also open it up to, you know, the city of Walson, the city of Trinidad, Warfarin County, Los Angeles County, and then all of our little municipalities to utilize this person to write grants.
Mr. Williamson?
Thank you, Councilman Ogletree. At this point, I have no questions. Thank you guys for being here.
All right. Thank you for your time. I had a couple of questions. The, first of all, on the grant writer contribution, what would be the priority of all the users of that person's time?
So basically, we would have to kind of just look at grant numbers and allow them to prioritize what's due and follow the system on, you know, times to get them on him. And then also just, we would have to work as a region to decide on priority with this person. And, you know, all work together as, as a region. So we, it's better if, you know, somebody's asking, we can all go together and go for a larger amount.
Okay. Because I know that we currently employ someone at least part-time, Talika.
Yeah, and Mayor Perot, um, so we will work with the COG to, I, I think this is just kind of an introduction to the idea, but there's a lot that needs to be fleshed out. One of my questions would be, what if, you know, we're competing for the same grant funding with the county and this person's helping with that? We want to be mindful of those situations. And of course, it's not a hall pass to our staff or our resources here because this grant writer is not gonna have the technical expertise on our water infrastructure. So we're still gonna have to provide city resources to assist with writing narratives and be heavily involved in the process. So what I would say is, you know, we're just kind of floating the idea right now. Let me work with Brian a little bit and we can come back to you all with, with, you know, a really well-thought-out plan to see if it'll, it'll work for our needs.
Okay. The other question I had, that's what I had about that, on the senior center, what effect, if any, would this have on the city's budget?
Yeah. So that's a good question. I, we don't anticipate, just based on what we've been talking about, really any effect. However, there are some things that I do want to point out. There are some infrastructure improvements that need to happen there that we are working on and we need to prioritize them. It'd be a good opportunity if we did segue to a new operator to make those happen, particularly ADA, parking lot issues, access issues to the kitchen, that type of thing. So we want to make sure that we're, we're putting those into place. One of the big benefits I see is as these folks are operating the new Warfarin County Senior Center and then Veronica with her connections to state aging, I think there's a tremendous opportunity to better serve our seniors in general. And one of the goals that I think we all should be mindful of is Trinidad is a terrific place to age in place. And, and anything that we can have these people help us with to ensure seniors get to stay in their homes, like meal delivery is huge. Transportation is huge. And to me, I just love the thought of it all tying into their collective efforts and then operating the center. And again, we haven't approached the current senior center with this idea yet. We wanted to have your feedback first. But happy to have those conversations. And to Brian's point, we would love to see them continue in existence and still provide services to seniors in our community.
Okay. That, that answers the concerns that I had. Would someone be office there full-time or is that what you're thinking? Or would they just be there when the food service was going on or?
So that was one of the concerns, you know, to make sure that, I mean, meals, we usually have someone there very early in the morning. They're usually there until we end up lunch. So, you know, initially I will be there because I want to be there and know and, you know, see what those hours of operations are. You know, we really would like to, there's an active group of seniors that go there on a regular basis. And we'd like to create maybe an activity board or, you know, where we have some trustees where they can really take portion of their own center. And I think that that's where, you know, there's some struggles is any person coming in, there's nobody sitting that isn't involved anymore. And, you know, people get picked and choose instead of letting everybody, like do it as a collective and be a part of it. But we will support it, you know, any way we can, you know, whether it's me going over there, Ryan going over there, Betty going over there, whatever. Like we really want to hear from the seniors. What do you, what do you want to see for the future of the Star Center Center?
I have another question. Is there, is there any, I'm sure we'll get to it later on in the process, transfer of assets? Like who owns the, the contents of the senior center? Do the seniors own it? Does the city own it? Does COG own it?
So COG owns all of the kitchen equipment? Well, this, how would you?
Everything in the kitchen. So from the kitchen door back is all pretty much purchased by, you know, AAA.
Okay. So what about the offices and stuff? The dining tables and chairs?
It remains to be, I mean, that's kind of one of the other things too, is I have asked from the beginning too, can I be like a member on your board? Can I come to your board meetings? And they're all super secretive. So I don't know. And, you know, that's the other thing. As directors have turned over, there's no transparency. So it's really hard to say, you know, they do a lot of fundraising over there. You know, they have like 400 members is what I'm told, you know. So there's a lot, there's just no transparency. So I really cannot answer those questions. We do have computers over there. We have printers over there. You know, we have certain things that we have that we provide services that there is a lot of stuff there.
We can figure that out.
Any other questions, comments? I think we'll all just be looking forward to our city manager's recommendations. But thank you. Number four, marijuana business relief efforts.
Good afternoon, members of City Council. In your pocket today's meeting included an ordinance that is one step that we'd like City Council to consider. Obviously, you all were the ones as staff to look for ways to help the businesses and help keep people employed in our community at these marijuana businesses. So one of the items in the proposed resolution is to suspend late fees on sales tax filing. So as you know, the marijuana businesses that collect sales tax, so 5%, have to remit that directly to the city of Trinidad by the 20th of each month. And late fees are pretty significant if they're late. So we're proposing that those late fees be suspended from November, because November has not yet been filed, would be due on December the 20th. So for November sales tax through June's sales tax, June of 2024. See how it goes, see how, how that works. The businesses would have to sign an agreement that's basically making an arrangement on how they intend to pay the tax. So. We're not wanting to compound the problem. We're wanting to truly offer some relief to the businesses so that they don't incur late fees. I think the businesses have all been really trying hard to make ends meet. And I think the late fees can compound that, that challenge. And so this was one effort that staff thought of. The second effort that staff thought of was for that same start timeframe, November 2023 through the end of 2024, reduce the renewal fees to $500 from the $1,000. And so all of the businesses. And so, um, all of the businesses would see that reduction and, you know, that would could potentially even help off, offset some of the, um, taxes if they're running behind on taxes and what have you, help them in that, in that regard. So those are the two, um, what I would say administrative type of relief efforts that staff thought of. We had some other, um, people from the industry that I heard from that talked largely about taxes and how the taxes really hurt the industry. Unfortunately, and I understand, you know, where the city is with our taxes that we impose. Unfortunately, we're not the only one that imposes additional taxes and those taxes can be steep. And then in addition to that, they see no business, um, tax credits for business expenses because of the nature of their business. So where any other business incurs an expense as part of their operations, they can claim that on their income taxes. Marijuana businesses can't. So at the end of the day, they're truly working largely for, um, largely for government to pay taxes. So it's difficult and they're having a hard time right now. And I think a lot of them, as, as you know, a lot of them employ, um, a number of people in town. And so not only do we not want to see the businesses close and those people lose their source of income, but we don't want to see people lose jobs. We don't want to see our buildings empty. So here comes the next part. The part where we're going to ask for some flexibility and open-mindedness. There, um, I know city council has thought about consumption clubs over and over again. There's mixed feelings on that. And I think that would probably even, I still struggle with figuring out how someone would actually make money doing that. One of our local businesses, um, thought about, well, what about if the city allowed a 420 party? So 420 parties can be different in a number of ways. They can, it can allow the vendors to come in, offer coupons and, um, you know, do various things, promotional things to help the businesses get business in. And then we also thought about, are you ready?
Praise yourself.
Outdoor, open consumption, uh, in like a special event type of arrangement at the golf course. And we thought of the golf course because it's very secluded with respect to location of homes. So 420 party. Um, and we have some people from the industry that can speak more to what those look like and, um, what other jurisdictions do because it's not new. And then, um, in talking with Les, he came up with a brilliant idea that would help in these winter months.
Once a year, I'm trying to come up with ideas. There's so much my time.
It's a test the water idea and, um, it would, it's not in the middle of winter, but if it helps the industry in any way, shape or form, it would be a good thing. He thought of a halfway, a 420 party on 210.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
And it just so happens that both 210 and 420 are on Saturdays this year, this 2024. So, um, barring any horrible weather events, it might be a great thing for our businesses. And we thought about the 210, um, party being at Space to Create. It would be much more limited with respect to any open consumption or anything like that. There would be a lot more of the coupon ideas. Um, we even thought about allowing use of the golf carts to transport people back and forth to hotels for the golf course event, the trolley, the van. And with that, I will turn it over to, um, Brad Brisbane that's here. He's the one that, that brought forth the 420 party idea, so.
Audrey, before, before you, before the relief effort, has there been a lot of city filing collective dispensary late fees?
There's been a number of them. Mm-hmm. There's been a number. And, you know, some of these, I shouldn't say some. All of these business people are very professional people. I think it hurts them greatly to be, number one, to be late. And number two, to be losing their livelihood and watching this industry struggle so badly. So, yeah, it's been difficult for them. We've lost, um, a couple of very large businesses recently. And before that, we've, we actually had two that closed their doors early, retain licenses. The opposite two, or the other two that are, that are the larger ones, they closed, relinquished licenses. So.
Any other questions? I had, what, are they, are we having trouble with late recording too, or just like filing?
Well, um, typically they kind of go hand in hand. So that was one of the things that our finance director was interested in is ensuring that we receive the filing on time so that she can create a receivable and know what the industry is still doing and what can be expected. So, um, with this, the language in the resolution, they would still be required to file their report on time, make a payment arrangement. If, um, either of those two things are not accomplished, they wouldn't be given that suspension of the, the late fees.
So Audrey, once a dispensary closes and let's say there's a resurgence of, in the next year or two of marijuana sales, they have to apply again for the same license or, or another license?
If they close, yes.
They close. So it just voids everything?
Yes, and it's very locational. So, you know, there's only so many conditional use permits out there. The, um, the, the way the ordinance reads now, the city won't grant any additional conditional use permits. So as long as, if they're closed for a year, they'll use, lose that conditional use permit too, so.
Anyone else? Councilman Williamson, anything?
I have something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I can kind of try it right now. Is there a possibility?
Thank you.
Oh, hold on just a second. Ms. Bree, go ahead.
Is there a possibility?
Sure, sorry.
For us to get Mr. Beasley to lobby for some change in the state marijuana?
It's certainly something we could bring up. I would, uh.
I would, I, you know, I think we owe it. I, I've talked to somebody in the industry and I think the reason that we're losing business to New Mexico is the limitation on the amount purchased.
So I will, um, Mayor Protam, uh, councillor, I have a eight o'clock call tomorrow morning with Mike Beasley. Let me ask him if there's already anything in the works.
If there's something and then?
Yeah, and then we can.
You mean the amount that a person from out of state can purchase at one time?
Anybody.
Okay. I will tell you, and I was schooled on this prior, good friend Aaron Shirley, who happens to be in the audience. And that is, it went up at some point. And I am sorry, I'll, I'll let one of the representatives speak, but it went up. It used to be a quarter ounce and now they can buy an ounce at a time. Now that may be in-state residents only. And we have a lady raising her hand, so.
That's Ashley.
Okay, well, they'll speak to all that, but, but it did change.
And that was a resounding concern of the people in the industry because New Mexico allows two ounces.
Yes.
Wow.
And so.
Yeah, good point, good point.
I'm going to sit down unless you have questions. I specifically, I'm only sorry.
Yeah, councillor.
Williamson, go ahead. Okay.
Um, again, I apologize for not being there in person. It, the Zoom makes it really difficult. Um, I, uh, have spoken to Les some concerning this this afternoon. And, uh, to be honest, I think, I'll, I'll just get some further questions I have answered offline. And it's a much more conducive way to, um, communicate via the Zoom meeting. But, uh, thank you. I do think it's important that the staff, um, city council, that we all do think creatively. Um, all of us want to see Trinidad business survive, uh, thrive, not survive, thrive. So, um, thank you guys for, um, you know, brainstorming for this and, um, I'll get further questions offline. Thank you.
May I add one more thing too? Another suggestion was, um, increased signage. That the city actually install increased signage to draw attention to the fact that we have, I guess, cannabis business-friendly communities. So that was another idea. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey.
Hello, council. I'm Jack Brisbane. Uh, I have Elevate 6010, which is on Main, uh, East Main Street. And I also have ownership in, uh, The Buzz, which is on Commercial Street. So I came tonight to speak, uh, I guess to answer some questions and speak a little bit about the thought of an industry party. That's something the council would entertain. Um, I had spoken to Audrey about that. I do live in Pueblo. And, uh, it's common in Pueblo. They do industry parties there. And, uh, it's typically held at the train depot in Pueblo. And they bring vendors from all over the state. So, uh, Cota typically used to come. I'm sure they won't anymore. Um, a lot of the Denver companies, even dispensaries from here, Pueblo, even as far as Durango and city dispensaries they're representing. Typically, it's open to the public. Public doesn't pay anything to get in the door. Uh, what that does, it brings a lot of people in because they come in, they get coupons from us. They get T-shirts, they get hats, they get pins that they like, whatever it may be that they, coupons is typically the, the favorite item. There are companies that do give away cannabis items there as well. I don't participate in that item there. Uh, we do give away coupons for our stores. We do see a large uptake of sales for about three to four weeks immediately after the parties. Um, from the coupons. We see a large jump, roughly 30% jump, I'd say, at our stores for almost a month. And then it usually kind of dies off and then the next party comes and we see another jump again. Um, I think it would help Trinidad bring people from out of state and neighboring communities here to try some of our products and shop at our stores.
Industry parties are, are they all monitored?
Uh, monitored as a security?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Yes, they typically have securities, obviously 21-plus only, um, because you don't have to give coupons out to underage people. And then usually the, they usually have like a live band there and things like that, of course, artists and things like that, yeah.
And if I could please, now, Mayor Protam, um, it contemplates, I believe, consumption, excuse me, purchases small amounts on premises for consumption on premises or?
I think it's more of a, it, it contemplates consumption on premise because it, part of the party is being there with the live band, smoking and enjoying out back, they enjoy the patio behind the depot there. And a lot of the vendors, like, uh, Binsk is a very large vendor in our state, uh, they'll come down, they'll bring a whole pile of stuff for people to smoke and they'll sit on the patio and that's where they set up their booth and they're, they're available for people to try their products.
Well, then for a facility like yours, are you anticipating that people would go to your store and buy with the coupon and then take it back to the party? I mean, I guess in my.
Good question.
Right, in my mind, I had it, you know, I just was envisioning the, the capability of buying small amounts for consumption on premises.
It'd be nice if we could. I don't know how we would.
I, I don't know, right, there are a lot of legal questions and I want to let council know, I don't mean to, you know, intercheck now, but I, I would have, you know, I was forgetting Pueblo, Durango, Denver, Boulder and Pueblo all do this. And I have reached out to the Durango and the Boulder city attorney's offices and I don't have answers yet. But there are a number of legal questions as to how to, how to do this and what we would have to do legally. But, but I, do you know, is that what Denver does? Is that what?
Haven't been to a Denver party. I've only been to Pueblo ones. I can only speak to those unfortunately.
But so some vendors come and give away their marijuana?
Correct. They don't sell it there. It's more of a gift type item, which may be why they do it that way. Maybe that's a different, because you can, as a personal person, I can share with people as I want to of my own product. I just can't sell to them outside of a store location that's more than good and everything.
Although in a consumption club, and I'm not saying that this is in any way connected to a consumption club, that's what's contemplated, right? You're buying small amounts for consumption on premises at the, the club. It, it may not otherwise be allowable. I guess one thing, and then I, I will shut up, and that, that is, so please for them. And that is, it seems like since we are trying to benefit local marijuana businesses, I mean, I don't know how we don't invite Denver or Pueblo, but it would be nice if we could have it be local Trinidad marijuana businesses.
You'd want your suppliers there, like Binsk, for example, is a Denver-based, but they just make concentrates at supplier stores. They don't have a storefront.
Okay.
Um, storefront wise, I would agree, like, local storefronts would be the, the most advantageous. Or this is like, well, like Mr. Shirley's business, El Sol Labs, a great example would be there. You know, they will, if they come in, they try El Sol Labs, they meet him, they love his products, they can find it, oh, I can buy it in six different places in town. Great, here's a coupon to purchase it here in town.
Yeah. One of the things that we're trying to, what I'm sorry, Senator, I was going to shut up about the marijuana comment. But that is, we don't want people like there smoking weed and, and obviously intentionally getting high and then going and shopping and driving around. I mean, I don't know that the trolley or the van are going to take people to your weed stores.
I think it's usually, it goes late in the night typically. Um, it's an evening party kind of thing. It's, um, I'd say it's more similar to a bar. Then, uh, and then what we see is the next day when people come in with coupons or that weekend coming and they come in with coupons and then they purchase from us at that point.
Okay.
Done?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Thank you. Anything we can do for the marijuana businesses, you know, when this, this started?
May I? Because I have a couple of answers. Um, so I did, I.
Will you please identify yourself, man? I'm sorry, just for the record.
Oh, my name's Ashley Ryan. I'm the store manager for Native Roots. Um, okay, so I did get an opportunity to visit a dispensary in New Mexico last week. You can, the purchase limit is two ounces. Um, you, at this time, can go in as many times as you want. You can go in, purchase, put it in the car, go back and purchase some more. Um, that's definitely hurting us. Um, I'm not saying we want to do that here. What I'm hoping is the new director for the New Mexico, um, equivalent of the MED will take care of that and, and put us into the looping. He actually used to be my boss here in Trinidad at Native Roots. Um, so I'm pretty sure that's something he's working on.
Would you tell us please what the limit is for in-state purchasers in Colorado and for out-of-state purchasers in Colorado?
All of it's the same on the recreational side. Um, in-state and out-of-state recreational can purchase one ounce per person per, per day. They can carry two ounces. They recently changed the marijuana rules to say that they can carry two ounces. So on me being a manager, my thought is, why can't I sell them both those ounces? Um, so Native Roots actually has their lobbyists actively lobbying to get this changed. Um, that is something that, um, they're working on. Native Roots is very, very active in the campus lobbying for the state of Colorado.
Ashley, how, sorry to interrupt, how do you track that? Is it license-based and you're, you have a database that shows that that person's already been there that day?
For my store, yes. When you come into my store, I have to scan your ID, put you in the system. Um, that prevents you from purchasing at any other Native Roots. So you can't come to my Native Roots, purchase an ounce and then go to a Native Roots in Denver the same day and purchase another ounce. That stops it. Um, I, however, don't have access to what they do in other stores. So once they leave my store, they're free to visit. I have no idea. We don't share that information. On the medical side though, they do. So if you have a medical and you go to a medical store, um, they can track whatever you purchase at any store across, because they have to put that information into our tracking system called METRIC.
Okay, okay.
Um, another thing they do in, in New Mexico is they don't have a limit on their, or they do have a limit for the recreational edibles. That limit is 500 milligrams. I went in and I purchased, um, some suckers. Two suckers to a pack, each sucker's 50 milligrams. They gave two for 20. Not two suckers for 20, two packs of two for 20. So they can purchase higher, um, higher limits on like the individual servings. Um, that would also be something that maybe we can lobby at the state level for, but I don't know if that's something that even Native Roots would be interested in doing. Um, what was the other? Um, small purchasing at these events. That is illegal. Um, what the hospitality licenses are, there's two different kinds. There is a license that you cannot, um, purchase, but you can consume. And then there's a license where you can make small purchases. I, they give a, a limit. I think the limit just went up though to a full. I, they give a limit, I think the limit just went up, though, to a full ounce. That way, if you're having a group or something, you can buy a full ounce. But I think you can only make one purchase per day. So if you're going to go in and purchase for a large group, you have to make that purchase immediately. You can't then go back and keep purchasing.
But that's for consumption clubs, right?
That's in the consumption clubs. Now, as far as like events, like what he's talking about, you cannot sell at those events, you can gift. They have to be recent, I mean, we have to have some kind of way to ID check, you know? You can't go to the library event and gift, you know, gift cannabis.
Thank you for sharing. But don't put that at the library.
You know what's funny is, they called me and asked me to put my logo on some bags that they're going to give away at the library. And I said, are you going to make sure that children don't get these bags? She's like, well, no. I'm like, well, no. I can't do that. But yes, so cannabis, I have been to a party in Pueblo. Basically, we went in, we got our IDs checked. You can purchase tickets ahead of time to get in like an hour early for VIP. You go in, you get your check, the inside was all just vendors with swags, you could get a hat, a t-shirt, whatever little meat toy they had with their logo on it. And then when you went around outside, there were lines. Then you just stand in line, and you went from table to table, and this one had a pre-roll, or this one had a dab you could take, or something like that. But you don't pay for it, it's free, and then they have food trucks out back too. Because of course, you know. But yeah, hospitality, I would definitely urge you guys to consider again, I know it's been through a couple of times. I'm working on something for you guys to look at. I'm going to work on some data to bring you hopefully that says that where people have approved hospitality, hopefully I can show that it has improved business as well. I'm going to be looking into that for you guys. I talked to Melinda Katinger, who is the COO and CFO for Smokies 420. She wanted me to just mention that Garden City, Colorado offers grants for building and property improvements. And they also have like an event that the vendors can take part in. I know we had here Santa Fe Trail Days that we took part in. And when we had it Trinidadia, we were able to take part in some more events that are going to be... I know we're gearing a lot towards families, and that's cool, but some adult events that cannabis can be a part of would be great as well. And then, Ms. Audra mentioned the tax fees when we're late. And, you know, I know you guys just did some kind of like incise tax break for transfers within Trinidad.
Excellent.
Incise, I had the wrong...
Yeah, you were close.
Close, close. But yeah, a tax break would be great. That way they can make whatever money we are getting go just a little bit further.
The grants for Garden City are the specific for the marijuana industry or just general businesses?
I think they're just business grants, and then they are allowed to participate. And grants are tricky, because if they come from federal government, we are not allowed to be involved at all.
Is it Garden City, Colorado?
Garden City, Colorado.
I don't know if it's in Kansas, because Kansas doesn't have that.
Yeah, they...
No. There's a Garden City, Jersey, New Jersey, but I don't, I don't, no, I'm talking about the Garden City here in Colorado.
Okay, I didn't even know that was a Garden City.
Kansas City marijuana around here from pulling people over.
That's all I heard, thank you. Does Council have any questions for Mr. Brisbane, or does Ryan? I have a question.
No, you go ahead, no, I have no more questions.
I'm just wondering, because I've been trying to watch the news out of Denver about hospitality and consumption clubs. Are they working in Denver, or are they making money?
They have several, I don't need to answer for you, Ashley. I don't know if they're making money, but they have several and have for a while.
Has, does anybody know if it's consumption clubs?
I'm not sure about Denver. I know that they were involved in a little bit of...
Anywhere in Colorado where they're...
That's the research I'm going to do for you. Yeah, to see if I can show that they've been successful. Or at least I'm going to get Liz to do it. But I know in Denver that the owners of a couple of clubs there were upset because you can still rent out a venue, and that venue will have a section where then you can consume. And they were upset about that because they felt like if people were going to rent out a venue to consume at a party, they should do it at the consumption club. So there was some lawsuit or something. I don't think they've settled that yet.
I can mention...
I think the suggestions Audra gave us are, I'm very pleased that we're going to try and do something. I, I think cannabis industry has shown that they're good partners in this community, and I think it's time we show our appreciation to them.
Ashley, are you track, sorry to interrupt, are you tracking any legislation coming next year that affects the marijuana industry?
Native Roots is really good about that. They host a legislative roundtable for their people to where we can get on. So any, if I can ask, I can definitely say...
Yeah, any bills that you see?
Or you have contacted Liz Zukowski?
Okay.
She is our PR person, she is the one that does everything with the state legislature.
Okay.
So she'll be the one that has contact with the lobbyists and all of that. She keeps track of that stuff.
And then last question for me, can you start like a rivalry between quality New Mexico weed and New Mex, like green chili?
Yeah. Well, you know what? Our quality is, is going to be better right now. Colorado has had, what, thirteen years? To learn how to grow.
We need to get higher and...
I'm hearing that the quality of the flower in New Mexico is wanting. But I hate to say it, a lot of Texans aren't coming for the quality, they're coming for as much quantity.
Everything's big. I'm just a fly in the law, but... Aaron, what about you?
Yeah, I have a few things.
That'd be great, yeah, a couple people.
Did you call me, or was that someone else?
No, not you, not you.
I hate Zoom.
Say that again, yes. My name's Darren Shirley, I own Main Tree Cannabis, that one little green light on right behind you there. I own Freedom Growers and El Sol Labs out in the industrial park. We have about ten thousand eight hundred plants to grow out there in a MIP. Been here from almost the beginning. I agree with everything that they were saying, but I also just think it's kind of important to point out the situation that the marijuana industry is in. Like the two things that you just asked, two eighty E, they may get rid of that this year, hopefully, or first part next year, and then they almost, they may declassify it to two or three early next year. They're the two big things on the federal level that would, the two eighty E and the banking would help tremendously. But one of the big issues that is cutting taxes, which I'm all, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, is that there's, so many states have come online now. They've decriminalized it, legalized it, and Colorado was the first stop for so many years from everyone coming from the East Coast here. And that's changed. And having a town of nine thousand with thirty dispensaries in it, the pie's this big. It was this big, the pie is this big now. And at some point, you know, if I have a thousand dollar day, I'm ecstatic. I mean, three years ago, that would have scared the crap out of me. And now, and I'm learning to live with it, and who knows? But I mean, a thousand dollar day is a great day for Main Tree Cannabis over there. I mean, it's the, it's the fact of the thing. I don't want to go out of business. How much longer can I stay in business? I don't know. The taxes do it, so I mean, all the little Band-Aids we want to put on this are just, at some point, maybe hurting us even more. I mean, I would look at, like I said at the very, very beginning, in Pueblo, I have shops up there, that's where I started. I've moved down here, I've lived down here, I've lived down here for five, six, seven, eight years now. I'm a resident here and everything now, you know, is, you know, keep it local, you know? I've said it. Publishing to anyone in from outside, Trinidad. I mean, when it comes down to it, the, the, the local people are the ones who are spending their money here. They make the money that, from the pilots here, they're making it. And they're going out to the cafe, and to Bell Lunas, and to Walmart, and to all the little shops here that spend their money. Not to point fingers, but the owners of Green Solution, they buy Jags in Denver. That's what those people do, buy Jaguars and nice homes in Denver, and they go out to nice restaurants in Denver. That's what they do. That guy, he doesn't, he spends his money right here. Anything he makes, that's what he does. And it just sucks, but I think the market has changed, and everyone needs to look at it. It's not a nationwide thing, it's a Colorado market. Everyone's got to get used to this. And capitalism, I'm all for it, I'm an American, I love capitalism. I don't know how long I can go. So I just think that the harsh reality needs to be said, as far as all the other stuff too. All the things that help out, and Audra, it was awesome, everything they tried to do, but the harsh reality needs to be spoken and said. And everyone has a, the whole, the whole picture. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's very, all of this is very informational, educational to me in particular. Did anyone else have any suggestions?
Hi, my, my name is Jason Brohard, and I'm here on behalf of Strawberry Fields over on Santa Fe. I'd like to, I would like to reiterate what the people before me have said. I mean, at this point, you know, the industry, we're seeing it die before our eyes. And it's going to take something, you know, radical, and it's going to take something that is, I don't even like to use the term radical, but something that is out of the box to recapture the customers that we've been losing due to the legalization from the state around this. And that's where I would like to mirror some of what Ashley said. Ashley, right? Okay, awesome. Yeah, you know, social use, you know, social use, I think would be something that is revolutionary. I mean, we're seeing already great success in places like Denver, you know, other areas that have, you know, approved it. And a place like Trinidad, it could completely change the tide of, you know, how business is, how tourism is, you know, and increase tax revenue. And it wouldn't take much, you know? One of the big things that we hear so frequently is that, you know, we get, at this point, a large portion of our customer base comes from Texas, because we've lost all of our New Mexico clients and our Oklahoma clients. But the biggest thing that we hear is that when these guys come out here to Texas, are from Texas, there's nothing really for them to do aside from either go to a bar, which, you know, a lot of cannabis users aren't interested in going to the bar. You know, they would rather enjoy and consume their cannabis while they're out here, you know, enjoy the use, enjoy the, you know, the tourism and everything like that. With social use, you know, we can get these people to come out, you know, have an incentive to stay longer than just a few hours and then head back home, you know, and, you know, get the hotels filled up, you know, for more than one day, you know? Have people really appreciate our town. I think if we were to do anything in this, in this city that would increase tourism, it would be social use lounges. It would be, you know, cannabis tourism, you know? The two events, the biannually events, you know, I think are a wonderful idea. There is, aside from social use, bi-yearly events, I can't think of anything else that would draw more people from different areas to this place, other than to be able to celebrate that, you know? So that was my big one. And really, one thing that alarms me about New Mexico's legalization, contrary to what a lot of people in the industry will tell you, New Mexico is catching up quick. I spend a lot of time out in Santa Fe, a lot of time out in Albuquerque, Los Alamos, and all those surrounding areas, you know? And part of what I do when I'm out there is kind of gauging how the industry is. And they're catching up on pricing, and quality is actually surpassing. In some of those areas, like Santa Fe, it's surpassing the quality that we're seeing here. It's a race to the bottom in Colorado right now, as far as pricing goes, especially in Trinidad, because we have so many different dispensaries in town. Everybody is kind of just racing to the best price possible to attract the most customers. And meanwhile, in New Mexico, their prices are steadily decreasing, and their quality is increasing and surpassing. You know, the downside to us racing to the bottom for our pricing is that the quality is really, really suffering. It's only a matter of time before those customers that we do still see coming from Texas decide that, you know, I'm going to save that couple hundred dollars from gas money to come out to Trinidad and just stay in Taos, or stay in Santa Fe. You know what I mean? Because they're going to be offsetting a lot of that, you know, pricing. However, if we had social use lounges, they don't have that in New Mexico, they barely have them. But I mean, it's, it would be revolutionary, you know? We could get these people out here and incentivize them to stay. Another thing that I would also like to say is that it is strongly believed that legal limits will be increasing, which will be really good for the industry out here, you know, in Trinidad. You know, that's another big complaint that our consumers have, is that they can only purchase an ounce, you know? And it's heavily enforced, you know, so, you know, that in itself is going to help us. And let me see here. That, that pretty much wraps it up. Yeah, I just wanted to strongly, strongly advise Council to consider those social use lounges, you know? And there's ways for them to be profitable, you know what I mean? With, like Ashley said, I mean, with the way that the licenses are written, you know, some of them only allow for a small amount of purchases to be made within the lounge itself. But that's not to say that they couldn't bring their own product, you know what I mean? If, correct me if I'm wrong...
They can.
They can, yeah. So, you know, they could bring their own product, and there can be cover charges to get into the lounges, there can be food, water, suggesting they have food licenses, you know what I mean? And it, it would be great, you know, and it'd be far less, you know, toxic for the town than just another bar, you know? So, that's just kind of my two cents. I hope it's, you know, hope it's of value, and I appreciate everybody's time.
And if I, if I could, please, Mayor Park, I guess, one of the things, and I don't mean to be remedial, but I think what you guys are saying is that whatever the profitability of consumption clubs would be, the impact on marijuana tourism would be huge.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It would be, I, I think you would be just blown away at the amount of traffic that would increase just for the simple fact that people were actually able to consume in a social setting. Because that's, again, one of the main things people complain about when they come out here, is that there's nowhere for them to be able to enjoy their cannabis, and there's nothing else really recreational here for them to be able to do to spend their time. So they come out, spend a couple hours, they don't, some of them go to the restaurants, but most of them just make their purchases and head back home, you know? So I say we give them a reason to stay, you know? Give them a reason to pay some lodging tax, give them a reason to, you know, help out some of these restaurants around here, because if they're staying the night, they're going to be eating low, so, you know?
Do you have, if I could, please, just ask one more question. A sense for, of the existing retail marijuana stores that we have in town, how many would be interested in, if they were allowed? However, we would do like a, you know, an allotment of licenses for consumption clubs, but how many of the retail stores would be interested in having a consumption club? But bearing in mind that it can't be, I don't think, connected to a retail store in any way? Any sense for how many would be interested in doing that? Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody else, but I strongly believe that a very large portion, if not all, of the dispensaries in town would find it beneficial to happen. And whether or not those dispensaries would be interested in purchasing a license to open up a social lounge themselves, you know? I don't know about that, but I do know that if it were legalized, that it would be coming from somewhere, you know? Yeah, somebody in Colorado would jump on that opportunity to open up a social lounge in a place like this.
And you would say that there would be, I think, a low limit, like if Council weren't allowed that, there would just be a certain number that would be allowed, like four or six, so that we don't run the risk of having them all over and having the equivalent of a dive bar in the marijuana industry. We've had a conversation in the past, I think four consumption clubs was the number that we talked about.
I think four or even less would still be revolutionary. Yeah, absolutely. Four would be incredible, you know? But even having a couple in town, I mean, the, the tourists would absolutely love that, you know? And right now that's what's hurting our industry more than anything is that we're losing the tourists and, uh, you know, I just, I'm so alarmed every time that I go out to New Mexico. I mean, like, like they were saying, I mean, their limits are two ounces. We only have one ounce and their quality is increasing drastically in certain nicer areas like Santa Fe and, you know, and not so nicer areas like Albuquerque. But, um, you know, um, with that higher limit, you know what I mean? And with the increase in quality, like I said, it's just a matter of time until the, you know, the public decides that it's just not worth spending that extra gas to come out here if there's not any extra, you know, amenities that they can enjoy while they're out here, you know?
Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Is any comments or questions or that any of you have for staff or less? Just, I think we should continue on discussing consumption.
Yeah, I think we, we kind of expanded off topic a little bit from the tax relief, which is fine. But I think it's evident that, uh, we may want to have some future conversations that are a little bit more poignant about this idea, um, that type of thing.
Yes.
Has anybody ever been to a consumption club, just curious? I mean, are they, do you just sit around? Is there formal?
Yeah.
It's like a bar.
It's, um, it's more like a lounge. Yeah, so it's, you know, they tend to be more, you know, schwanky or environment, sit back, relax, spend your time, you know, which would be great because, I mean, the longer they're spending in those places, the more likely they're to stay the night and they'll be purchasing drinks and food and stuff like that, you know what I mean? So, yeah.
Lot of alcohol.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Cigar clubs.
Yeah. Cigar clubs. Councilman Williamson, do you have any comments you wanted to add? Councilman Williamson?
Uh, not, not at this, not at this point. I'll, I'll get further clarification in person.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, question about the consumption, well, advertising. Are you guys under a strict advertising situation still going to the beginning? They were allowing you just to do like weed maps and stuff like that. Are you, or is the advertising, uh, like any?
It's, as far as I know.
Uh, the Marijuana Enforcement Division, um, the only limits we have on advertising is we can only advertise in any space or publication where reasonably it is expected that fewer than 30% of people underage, fewer than 30% of the people that are looking at that particular advertising space are under the age of 21. But I think that's the only thing. I know they were throwing something around about stopping us from, um, sponsoring events, uh, which was related to that case in Denver where the consumption people were angry about people hosting private parties at other venues and consuming. Um, but the Marijuana Enforcement Division did not accept that rule. They decided against it.
Thank you. I, I think the only thing that I was curious about is whether or not, um, our current laws would permit a 420 party and if not, if there's some kind of temporary use permit that we might have to come up with to allow for that, just to kind of get a taste of it because I think that's a critical aspect for this community to see. I know that every time we've talked about it, there's been a lot of concern about air quality and keeping kids away. And so if it could be done properly, then maybe people would be more willing to consider something different. Anything else?
We should have the senior center.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, you might be surprised.
It's a joke.
What about 210, any?
I think that's a great idea.
That's what I'm saying. We need to look at our laws and see if there's anything that would keep us from doing that. Okay, we've been doing this for about an hour and a half. Do we need a break or are we going to finish up the last two?
Strong two.
I think the last two will be pretty quick.
All right. Number five, commit funds discussion.
Okay, uh, Mayor Council, I will talk about that. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to review what we have committed, um, just for the public's benefit and yours as well. So I'll just kind of rattle off the list of projects and where it stands now. So based on the most current resolution, we have Riverwalk improvements and we have about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars there. Exit 14, which we talked about earlier, we have $809,000 set aside from that. Uh, Central Park facilities is 1.25 billion. However, that's a lot less because we're doing a lot of updates with that money right now and we plan to exhaust that funding hopefully in the next few months to get Central Park ready. So thank you, Council, for that. Uh, water infrastructure, we have about a million, um, sitting in there. Economic development land acquisition, there's 941. Um, we want to keep that because there's a lot of land acquisition that we're looking at right now for trail improvements and, and building that type of thing. Uncompensated absences, we still have that budgeted at a million. And, uh, just a reminder for the public and for the council, that is, uh, situations where we would require payouts, um, based on previous policies, uh, to employees upon separation. And so we have to have that money budgeted to, uh, to account for those costs. Eagle Rock subdivision, we have 300,000. Fleet, um, half a million for, for vehicle purchases, uh, fleet needs. And then, uh, fleet specific to the fire department, we have a million budgeted there. So total of 80, 8, 8.3 million dollars that we have committed right now. And then we're anticipating going into next year, having approximately, hopefully more than this, but, um, considerable relief, $750,000 that we can commit to either one of these items to improve that budget or commit to a new, new project. And, uh, I will never come to you without a lack of suggestions, but I'll let you guys have your conversation and if you want my suggestions, I'm happy to.
Steve, how is that lottery fund money distributed and allocated according to percentage of population?
Yeah, I think that's right. And, uh, what I can tell you is it's, I think last look it was a couple hundred thousand. It's not that significant.
We have 120,000.
Yeah, 120 sounds right. It's a low number. We're actually eyeing that money right now, um, to do improvements to the skate park and rehabilitate that. Uh, that's a great use of those lottery funds.
Over the years, has that always stayed status quo?
More or less, yeah.
Be nice to them.
It would be nice, yeah.
Okay.
I have no questions.
No questions.
Is he gone?
Yeah, he wanted to tell you that he's, he's listening, but he's not on and he's kind of half.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
That's good. I said, um, do you have any suggestions of something that you think maybe we should remember him?
There's always suggestions. Um, so we, we could dump more, we could dump the money, I shouldn't say dump it, but we could place it into Riverwalk improvements. If I had any suggestion for current, um, allocations, that's the one I would go for. Certainly because we're, we're talking upwards of a 14 million dollar project total to get that done. If we're going for grants, it's nice to have a robust amount for matches. So that would be a good option there. Um, Colorado islands come up quite a bit, um, as a suggestion. We are finding some money right now to improve the dog park. Um, so that, that's going to get taken care of. Some of our other parks could use some TLC. Um, I, I, I guess, aside from infrastructure emergencies, I would recommend that we try to put it towards quality of life. Uh, and the reason I say that is because, you know, we're going into a budget cycle where there's no bells and whistles on our general fund. And so unfortunately first to get cut is oftentimes those quality of life services because we still have to provide public safety and maintain infrastructure. So I'd, I'd like to see this money go towards community amenities that, that activate our community and maybe get people out.
Are trees on commercial in Maine? Quality of life?
Trees on commercial in Maine, uh, we'll, we'll talk about that sometime soon. But yes, uh, we're, we're eyeing those to, to trees. Well, I don't, let's not talk about that because that's off topic from this, but we will bring that as a discussion for you guys.
I just hope that as you have ideas that you'll bring.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. Once we have the full slate of the new council on board next year, um, and we'll have a better sense of, of what we're looking at, we'll come to you with, with an item, with multiple options and suggestions. But at this point, we just kind of wanted to review where we're at and, uh, give you what our anticipation is for next year as well.
One last question. What's going on with Eagle Rock subdivision? I know that's money has been sitting there for a couple of years. Anything?
It has been sitting there. I don't know. Audra, do you know offhand?
Um, this city is, this city is ready to start working on this work.
Yeah. That's right, this city.
But we need, yeah, we need to meet with the proposed developer up there and make sure that we're all on the same page with this.
Okay.
So, substitution.
Yeah.
All right, proposed ordinance changes. Number six.
Steve is going to.
Yep, I've got, I've got one right here. Um, so really the big one is procurement code changes. Let me grab that. Okay. I do have it, I think I have it faster. So, um, in looking at our procurement thresholds, we're, first of all, our procurement code in general, we, we'd like to, uh, hopefully in 2024 propose an entire rehabilitation of it. It's, it's not nearly detailed enough. It's not nearly specific enough. In my opinion, there's a lot of confusing terms in it. Uh, it talks about informal bids, which is not defined versus formal bids, which is not defined. So we really want to make sure as more, more so as a courtesy to our vendors that they're understanding our procurement process and that we are as well internally. Um, we've already done a very good job, I think, over the last year of kind of tightening down, especially on the RFP process, um, how, how we work through that. But one thing that's come up recently is our, our small procurement thresholds are incredibly low, particularly compared to the state. So right now it's pretty much everything, even if it's less than a thousand dollars. Cheryl is diligent about ensuring that we get free quotes. So everything's on a best price attainable system at a minimum, which is good and we want to keep doing that. Um, anything above, I think it's up to 5,000, um, requires those quotes to be written. It can't just be a, I think it's 5,000 to 10,000, they have to be written. It can't just be a phone call quote, kind of take down that number. Um, then you get up to 20,000 and that's where we, we want quotes that are apples to apples. So we would issue some kind of a little solicitation that would be equitable to send out to everybody. You know, we want this number of floor tiles, they have to be this size and of this quality. And then we get kind of an informal bid on that. Up to $50,000, that's where we would put together that informal bid, formal, informal bid. I don't even know how to define it. Um, but essentially what we mandate there is that, um, you put together a scope of work, detailed pricing for each item that you're asking for, or detailed list, and then ask for pricing and a, a bid basically based on that. So anything $50,000, that's where staff kind of can work through those processes. You get to that $50,000 level and that's where, uh, council has to approve those procurement contracts. And you guys see those regularly where we come in and ask you to do that. Um, so what we're, what we're looking at is, um, so I, I mean, the big thing that we're trying to accomplish is, uh, changing our small procurement thresholds to, from that $50,000 amount to $100,000. And, um, so that would redefine what an informal bid is, of course, but, um, that would give staff the opportunity to get through a lot of projects and I'll give you some examples a lot quicker than having to wait to take it to a council meeting. The two things I'll say on that though is, one, you all have already committed the funds and allocated it through the project cycle. So we're not trying to, you know, be not transparent with you all. Really, we're just trying to expedite. The biggest example I can think of right now is vehicles cost, um, over $50,000. So anytime we're just purchasing a cop car, um, I, I'm buying if the council wants to review every time we do that, but you've already, like I said, you've already committed the funding for it. Uh, we're, I guarantee you, we're going to get it at the best price we can. We just would rather not have to take that to you all and vehicles particularly, we're buying used vehicles now just because the inventory is not good on you. And sometimes it literally is, okay, yeah, if you can get us a letter this afternoon saying that you're committed to this pricing, you know, we'll hold the vehicle for you. And sometimes it's give us $2,000 to hold it for you. So those situations, we're, we're seeing those more and more. If we have to tell them, oh, can you wait a week or two till we bring this to council for approval, we might miss out on that opportunity. So that's the crux of it. Um, we'll, we'll be presenting an ordinance for your consideration that's very detailed and talks about all of this stuff in next week's packet, but just wanted to, to take the time to, to kind of explain that to you all at this point. Answered.
Steve, on the proposed ordinance change on section 752, you have the purchases in agreements based on formal bids and then the exceptions on 753. What is that? The purchase of services available from one source or when standardization or compatibility is the overriding consideration?
Yeah, so that, that gets into sole source territory. So, um, an example might be if we have a Pierce fire truck and we need something, something breaks on that truck and Pierce is the only one that will actually make that product that would go for replacement, we, we wouldn't have to bid that out. We would, we could just order it specifically from them.
I understand.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of what that gets at. Sometimes they're really literally, it's very rare, but there literally is only one manufacturer, one service provider for a certain type of service. Um, and so we can bypass the procurement process on that. The other thing that we routinely take advantage of that, uh, you all don't really see, but we are able to colloquially piggyback on, uh, procurements that were otherwise competitively bid through a public process. So, uh, state pricing agreements, the state purchasing office, they negotiate pricing agreements. That's in fact where we buy most of our new vehicles from. So we'll go off of that. Uh, there's other things that they've negotiated in terms of services and we're allowed to work with that vendor and have them extend the same pricing to us. Uh, the Houston Galveston area council is a large metropolitan purchase organization in Texas and they are kind of the gold standard nationally for things like ambulance chassis. So they get competitive pricing on all of that and then we can identify them and partner with them to, to quickly purchase things that have already been got, that have gone through that dating process. So all of this is to say, you know, we're, we're hoping to save time and money in this change. And, yeah, absolutely. That's the big thing. And just having that ability to, to quickly do those purchases can really, really help us out, especially with the supply chain being where it's at right now.
Council coming in?
No questions.
I have one question on, um, so I kind of figured this out that, you know, the proposal is to go on 750 from 1 to 10,000 to 1 to 50,000. Is there, and, and then the next one is going from 10 to 50 to 50 to 100 and so forth. But I had a question for Audra. I talked with her a little bit about this. Should we look at, um, increasing the bottom limit beyond 1,000? And the discussion that we had and we talked with Cheryl, uh, never on the phone, um, that perhaps it's a good idea to even keep some structure in place for even purchases that are just a thousand dollars. Because I'm sure that that's happening on a daily basis these days in the city. But is there any thought that it would be efficient, more efficient to raise it to something like 2,500 or, or is 1,000 still the right way to go?
We, we like 1,000 and I'll, uh, the good thing about this process is typically what'll happen is someone will call three vendors and say, give me a pricing to do this work or provide this product. We're not heartless. So if, what we recommend is that they offer them three days, um, to get a response. If they don't get a response, we consider that non-responsive and then we can move forward even if we just have one quote. So this really, a thousand dollars seems low, but it really puts the onus on our staff to do their diligence and, um, and demonstrates to the public that we're, we're being accountable for, for even small amounts that we're spending.
Okay. Any other questions, Collins? Or anything else?
Um, one last thing that I wanted to mention that we're, we're starting the process of pursuing, which I think will also save us time and money, um, is doing some on-call contracts. So we're starting with engineering. So the idea would be that we would get multiple contracts with various engineering firms that have been competitively solicited. Some of them have expertise, some of them don't. And then for small projects, we'd be able just to have them on-call, ready to go on a phone call and issue a PO to them. And that saves us having to do a full RFP all the time for, for just some minor design work. Um, so we're hoping that that will really help, uh, staff out and save some time here so we can focus on bigger and better things.
Does that cost us more money to be on-call?
It does not. Uh, it shouldn't in theory. So again, we're asking for competitive pricing. So let's say we get in proposals from five different engineering firms and most of them are similar in price and then you have one that's twice the hourly rate of everyone else, we would probably reject that. Um, so we will, we will absolutely make sure that pricing is a part of the evaluation.
And, you know, a lot of times the thing that people get frustrated with, with work done by government is it takes a long time. by government is it takes a long time. And then this address is that we're doing things as efficiently as we possibly can and putting systems in place to allow for that.
Absolutely. Okay? Is there other ordinance that we're gonna talk about? I forgot.
The rebateable amount for transformers.
Oh, yeah, so the other change that we're gonna be bringing, so there's an old provision in our electric, the electricity section of our municipal code that allows the Director of Power and Light to negotiate a payback for the purchase of transformers for new projects in terms of utility bill credits. So we have, I think, six or seven of those contracts that exist right now and some of them are ridiculous, there's thirty years that it's gonna take for them to get paid back. We have one gentleman who's deceased and we still, under that agreement, would have owed him, it's a couple thousand dollars at this point, but now we're not obviously gonna credit someone who didn't even pay for the transformer to begin with. We've checked regionally, this is not a common practice, so we'd like to remove that section and we'll bring that as a suggestion to you all. However, if, if someone comes in and there's a major development that they're working on with us through our economic development negotiation process, things like transformers, that might be something we're, we're willing to assist on that from that level. We just don't wanna have it in our electric utility as, as an option for, for just anybody. And what really is challenging is, and that's why I like the economic development side better, some transformers will be purchased and installed and it only benefits that project. And so then we would be reimbursing that customer through utility bill credits for the cost of that transformer, but that's just really kind of donating the transformer to them. But then there's other situations where someone might put in a transformer and it's gonna be the transformer that's gonna be for their project, but then several other, you know, development projects down the road. So there's a benefit to other people as well. So it gets really tricky to figure out, okay, so should they be reimbursed, that type of thing? That's why we'd rather look at it holistically just through our economic development process.
Questions, comments?
No?
Is that it, everything?
I think that's everything.
All right. And that concludes our work session. Thank you.
Okay.
Well done.
Yeah.